Good evening and thank you for coming to the Sohegan School Board meeting. It's October 3rd and it's 6:00 PM. And before we begin our meeting, there's a few things I'd like to say. And I would like to remind everyone, we're part of a community. This community includes the school board, administration, in our schools, students, staff, maintenance, food, work service, et cetera. The community also includes our town. We represent our towns and we have been elected to represent the residents of Amherst and Mount Vernon. Our administrators and staff work very hard to make the experience the best experience for all students. And sometimes hard decisions need to be made. The decision-making process can sometimes be lengthy. And at times, it is appropriate for these conversations and processes to include students, staff, committee members, and school board members. And sometimes it does not. We understand that Sohegan is a more unique environment than other school districts. But we believe this supports the democratic ideals this school was founded upon and makes us collaborative. When a decision is made, we come to the table to discuss it. This means that we discuss the idea or subject and not attack people working on the idea or subject. I'd like to remind everyone that as a community, we respect civil discourse. This includes being careful what words you use and ask our questions or make a statement. Please remember to assume best attention. Otherwise, negative texts can split our community and make it difficult to work together. I was fortunate to attend the community council retreat last week. And community council came together and discussed what it means to be in a community and what a healthy community includes. Some discussion from the retreat includes structures for civil discourse. And it's actually still up there, which is really cool. And I'd like to remind everyone that having a personal opinion is important. But we need to make sure that we listen to what others are saying and not just be ready to respond. I apologize for the lack of civil tone from the last meeting and to our administrators who left the meeting feeling defeated. When we work together, we make a stronger system for our students. And I ask everyone to work with me to set an example as to how we work together, even if we have different points of view. Thank you for listening to that. We'll start the meeting with our public input, one of two. And we open up to anyone in the room who would like to come forward and address the board. And I don't see that happening. Do you have anyone online?
We have four people online.
Thank you. If anyone is online and would like to speak, please raise your hand. You'll need to make sure that you have your name in the, in the, your actual name in the list. And we can promote you to panelist. I don't see any.
No, no hands raised.
No hands being raised. All right. We will come back to, for more public input at the end of the meeting. There are consent agenda. Our draft is, includes some draft minutes from September 5th. Do, are there any comments or changes anyone feels need to be made? Seeing none, can I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? I have a motion from Ms. Guley Zimmerman. Do I have a second?
I'll say it.
We'll take Ms. O'Keefe. Thank you very much. Since everyone's here, we can have a simple, we can raise our hands tonight, which is awesome. Thank you, everyone. So if you are in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? And no objections. That passes. Thank you very much. Under reports received, we have a facilities update. And I know our Sohegan Finance Committee is taking a tour right now with Roger as well. So thank you for all of Roger and Roger's work and his team. And treasurer's report is also there. So I want to say thank you to CJ. Are there any questions on those reports or any comments?
When the air quality test results are available, will those be included and delivered to us for review or requests that they would be?
I think add it to the list for Roger.
Thanks.
They're on the website. Maybe the link from the website.
Typically.
Yeah, just notification that they're available. Perfect. Put them in agenda packet.
Anything else? No, so right. Committee updates. Committee updates, I will say, let me just start off real quick. PPC, we just met. We're just, we agreed to the summary page that's always put on the website that summarizes any of the changes, usually do the dollar amount changes. So any employees can look at that. In the process of changing the actual language within each of the policies, that would be further along, probably in another month on those. Constitution Interpretation Committee. So I found out that they just finished selecting all the people for the Constitution Interpretation Committee. So we're very excited. Brad, I believe you are on that I just heard is the excellent, is the administrator. I'm the last person I was looking for. So based on our discussion last month, we will have to, we'll have to bring you guys together and we'll present what it is that we are looking for. So I'll send an email out. And John, I believe you're a school board representative. And we'll get a meeting together.
Can I comment on that real quick?
Yes. And at this point, as far as that committee, I mean, they're, they just interpret. So they're, they're looking at it. Generally, we're not yet talking about changes or anything. No, their job is to look at it and we'll explain, basically, we're going to ask them to review it in the sense of what procedures are we doing today? Versus what the constitution kind of says and not to make any suggestions of change and just bring that list to us. What lines up and what doesn't. That's the way I'll look at it. Then we can have further discussion from there. Thank you. Okay? What else? Policy committee?
We've met once and organized. The chair is Jessica Hinkley from Mount Vernon. Vice chair is Shannon Gascoigne of Amherst and I'm the secretary. Some of the things we discussed were, there's some significant Title IX updates that's sort of ambiguous area right now. There was a, I believe there's a, an NHSBA meeting scheduled for October 4th to help us sort that out.
That's correct. It's, there's two. There's a law conference on the 9th that we'll be attending and then a specific Title IX conference, but a three-hour session professional development training. Changes on the 10th.
So ninth and 10th?
Yeah.
We discussed a little bit policy GB, BD, that is the background check policy. If you recall, we had this discussed last term about opening up some space in the definition for designated volunteers. Background checks, which relates particularly senior project. Special project at the high school. So we, we're going to, we've been passed Amina, I believe, to to figure out who's going to track when background checks are needed. It's going to implement that. Is there was a question, Ms. O'Keefe had raised about, you know, the frequency with which they should be renewed. So that was brought up and there's been no recommendation yet. That's in the works. We discussed policy BB, BH, that's the board voting. Board policy at the city level, expected weighted voting and into a consensus view that there probably is no statutory authority for us to, that's the concern of Greg Fritz. Question, which was could we decide beginning of the year to do it or not do it because the statutory language specifies that any member can call for that in any meeting on any topic. And that's about it. We discussed how we were going to tackle the various priorities. So priority number one is anything remnant from last term that's dangling out there. There should be some ball updates from the NHSBA that we'll tackle first, any changes in the law that require updates to policy. And then we will be able to get to our regular alphabet soup. And just looking at, I think we're going to go for I this year. That's it.
All right. Thank you. Last one. So when, I assume this, the Amherst School Board Association is going to kick out folks new Title IX policy, changing the law. If what you all put forward is anything different, like that deviates. Can we get like, can you make sure when we rule on it that we're able to discuss what the deviations were? Because I am very, very, very leery about changing policies based on federal law that would comply with that.
Yes.
So if it's a deviation like we added or designate need, that's fine. But I'm just like, if substantively, there's something that's different from the recommended, I'd like to, I'd like to see those changes.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you. I'm going to CIP.
Just two questions.
Yes.
Policy. So number one, where did we see the minutes from Toronto anymore? That was the source of those?
Yeah, we have Danae's attending policy meetings, big events. And so we have those and I'll talk to Chelsea about where they're at right now. Yeah, we have, the plan is to get them somewhere. And they might be somewhere.
And then the other thing was, there were two things that I hope that you guys would discuss with policy. The second one was the learning resource challenge policy. So remember, we took out curriculum and other things that maybe found other thoughts from a policy. We limited restricted only to library materials. And sort of bring it back to say, hey, we were now taking away the right of a family or a parent to challenge something through a more formalized process. So I just wanted to make sure that that's washed through, that we did that with purpose and more importantly, the why. That's.
That was the second. We did not address that. Thanks for the reminder.
Any other questions for policy? All right. Anna CIP.
After a very, a little bit of a rush start on the very, very first meeting, which I didn't go to. I'm on a Monday, but apparently a lot of other people didn't go to either. There were, that meeting for an organizing meeting, two meetings where we met with all the heads of the different departments who came in to present their proposals for the upcoming year. And then one today where we, we just kind of reviewed and we're getting ready. There's going to be a public meeting on the 16th. And then everything will go down to the selectmen. So that process is.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Anna? All right. So before we go to any other committee, I want everyone, this is Maya Gascoigne. She is our state representative on the school board. So very excited to have you. Welcome. And I'm going to have her present the community council.
Yes. So I'm Maya. I'm sophomore. I'm not thinking this year. I'm really excited to be taking on this role. Just to kind of give you a rundown of past like two weeks beginning of the school year. We started off with the council retreat. This was a really great event. Everybody really got to want as a council. We talked a lot about what is a democratic high school and like what the key aspects of a healthy community are. And we really just got to know each other better. We also did a kind of proposal simulation as a council. So we could establish the norms for what discussing a proposal looks like. Especially for any new members, I mean, new people to the school, so they can know what council's like. We also had extra executive and actually extra executive students and staff elections as well as maybe review board and the constitutional interpretation committee nominations and elections. For the extra executive student, Ariana Goach was selected, extra executive staff is Kevin Proctor. For the community review board, the student rep is Sam Hogan and for the constitution interpretation committee, the council student rep is Jacob. Also, one of our committees, the student activities committee. They always put on a bonfire at the cause for cause game. It went really well. It was super successful. People really enjoyed it. Council also did the popcorn stand, the cause for cause this year. It went well. I don't believe we have the We also had class forums. Our third class forum, since they are implemented last spring. We discussed the appeal to the request proposal. This field has not been discussed in council yet. It is looking like it's going to be discussed in our November night meeting. However, we wanted to bring just a regular proposal to council to kind of use everyone into it before bringing such a complicated.
So thank you. I'm just going to say it all. Ask everyone who has questions, but I was at the retreat. It was awesome. Joanne McDeed was there and presented the history of council and she's been there since the second year the school had opened. So she has a long history and really explained it to the kids, explained what their what their role is in the school. The kids got it. It was really cool to see. So that was enjoyable. Any questions for Maya?
Is council fully staffed? I mean, like, like, do you have like all the positions filled? Because I know there's a, there's a number.
I'll be making an announcement in a minute. We are in need of a Mount Vernon rep.
Yeah, like I'm not, I'm just not sure.
One, yeah, there was a community, so.
Because I know we got like the set ones, but then there's the at large one.
So they're all set.
They're all, they're all, are they all students or are they a mix of students?
Well, we have five community members.
Right.
But they're, but the at large is all.
Community or all students.
Yeah, it's all students.
Okay.
Yes.
So just to make the announcement, we'll put it out on the SAU site. One of our community reps from Mount Vernon had to resign. She's not able to attend meetings. So we're going to be looking for a new rep to attend community council. So we will get that on the SAU site and blast it out to see what we can do and hopefully appoint them at our next meeting, October 30th. 30th, not the 31st, 30th. Is this kind of our de facto representative for the board?
Me?
Yes.
Can we just make a motion to make it official?
You can't if everyone's okay.
Yeah.
I think we should.
I was hoping to speak to our rep before I did that, but.
I, I think we should make it official.
We can make a motion to appoint Stephanie Grimes, the new community council representative.
I was second. Anyone else?
We have another. We have two.
Well, Christie is the second. Well, Christie, Christie goes as the second person.
I think anyone for community council, anyone can come observe it. We could all come. We can't talk to each other if we do.
All right. So if there's no other nominations, then those in favor of ten opposed. All right. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you for taking it on.
Yeah. Community council's great. Any other questions for Maya?
First of all, welcome. Student body could not have picked a better representative for, for the board. So thank you very much for not only raising your hand, but thank you for your fellow peers for bringing up. We're excited to work with you. What are some of the policies that you guys are at least complimenting this year that are kind of at the surface other than the replication of the last ranking status?
Yeah. So I think we really are looking for ways to connect community council to community this year. I know I want communications committee. We're doing a lot of work right now to try to get community representation and voice within council. So that's something that we just continue to work on.
That's awesome. I may make a suggestion. Try to put the idea of maybe having one meeting up at Mount Vernon. It's probably a good way. It's an olive branch. May not get anyone to attend, but at least it's an olive branch to say, hey, the first Sohegan Community Council meeting is being held at the Mount Vernon Dayland Library. Everyone in front row, welcome to.
One of the night meetings would be good. It's people who transportation anyways. So you're getting them up after they're after school. They try and start because they'll have to come back for athletic practice.
Just a couple.
It's a great idea. I like the night meeting because you don't have the question of who's driving the who, how are they getting there? You get there the same way you, you know, your family has arranged for you to get the other night.
Great idea. Nice. Anyone else? Mr. Bopper.
I would just like to let you know that your updates are, don't have to be limited to community council businesses. You could inform us what the community council body thinks about decisions of the board may or may not make. Put an input into our discussion. Have a seat at our table. You're not limited. To the board meeting. Or anything that's on the horizon of the administration. Really, I view it as a really broad seat that you have and have a broad view of. You can communicate what the community council is thinking about any topic. Please, please, please share. And help our, our, me and our dialogue with each other.
And I would just add to that, it can be also just your view. You know, things you've observed, things that you care about, things you agree. Maybe times we're talking about something where you can't, you don't feel like you can speak up enough at the entire community council because you haven't taken it over. You, but please, yeah, the French government, you're prepared for. We're working with you. Other committees, athletic, I think we will go into non-public. We'll talk about the recreation agreement. Any other committee updates? Any other committee updates? Do you have anything?
There's nothing that's different from.
All right. Going to.
David and I are meeting.
Okay. All right. All right. So I'm going to move along to budget presentation, which was the perfect timing for our guests to join us. Ms. Facy.
Yeah. So yeah, thank you. So tonight we have draft one of the FY 26 Sohegan Property School District budget. I'm going to turn it over right away to Mike to go through some of the, the mission and vision and some of the staffing and demographics and other information before he turns it back to me for the actual budget.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Ms. Facy. So the, as Amy indicated, this is draft one. We are a long way from, you know, being finalized. But I do appreciate the work that went in into this budget, starting at the building. And we talked a little bit about zero-based. And, you know, go approaching budget differently across SC 39. But at Sohegan, with the transition of, you know, my role as Sohegan as the superintendent, we kind of maintain some of the practices that we've had in the past. We're pretty proud of the process that we went through to get to here. I, I can appreciate the work done by Ms. Facy, Katie Hanon, the business office, into Galen, into the administration, into the teacher leaders in the building, just a real concerted effort to bring in a, a a draft of the budget that is really appropriate for the work that is happening at Sohegan High School and in SC 39. So you're going to see everything that, you know, we are, connect ourselves to is the framework. And so as we go through the budget, we want the budget to be a reflection of what is valued by the community, valued by the school. And we think we have, have this outlined in this budget. The piece that makes this place very interesting, and we talk, we say about it every year, is it's, it's about balancing high academic expectations and the overall well-being and the social emotional well-being of students. And we put a lot of effort into both. And I think that plus being a democratic school makes Sohegan very unique. You can see the the priorities. And as people know, we have linked our priorities at Sohegan High School to the priorities of SC 39 and the frameworks, as we've done in the other three districts. And I think you can see the, the, it's, they're slightly evolved and Dana at some point will speak to these a little more in depth in a principal report and, you know, at a board meeting. But for tonight, you can see where the energies are being poured, put in at Sohegan. And the budget reflects that as it's connected to SC 39's framework. So demographics, you'll dig into it. I don't want to like go through them, you know, right now in detail, but please take a look at it. And you'll get some, you know, specialized free and reduced lunch numbers in there. You can see some, some grade levels have increased, you know, since last year and some are, are down, but we're about roughly the same. School demographics, this is updated as of, you know, 10-1 and in where we're at there. So you can see the number of students that are involved in a variety of different activities, that those are healthy numbers for a school. 700-ish, you know, students. So we're pretty pleased and obviously you see the hours of community service there. You see post-secondary plans and, and you can see there's a changing student. There's a changing experience. There's a changing use of time of how people use this building and where they put their energies and where they put their programs as they prepare themselves for the next phase of their life. And as I've been saying this since 2020, we wanted to make sure that Sohegan High School was good for as many students as possible as for all students, regardless of your pathway. And that is something when I arrived as principal, that was made loud and clear by the board chair and, and the board members that year, that we needed to evolve this institution to make sure it fits the needs of all students in our communities. And you could see the needs are changing by where they're choosing to, what they're choosing to do old at the conclusion of their time in high school. And so this budget and the previous budgets reflect that. You can see some demographics and staffing. We'll get into that a little bit more. There's a slight increase in how we got there, you know, we'll, we'll explain as the budget process goes on. And then you get some key areas of focus if you, you know, where, when you dig into this presentation and board members, you get to ask questions and finance committees get to ask questions and community members will get to to interact with it. But you really see graduation-ready equity for all students. Planning for the future. And for me, it's realistic. This is, and I'm glad Dana and her people pick up what I'm putting down. You know, we're one district of Sohegan, but we're pulling from the same tax base. And so we want to be realistic on what we do in all buildings and all districts as we develop budgets across SC 39. And so super pleased with the work. There's an overview on how it was set up. We'll talk more about that as we get into the budget process for the next, you know, few months. But I'll, I'll kind of kick it back to Ms. Facy and we'll get into it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So so going through the numbers at this point, typically we have an executive summary slide that really breaks down the differences between the three budgets that we compare to. So the current year, which is the FY 25 operating budget, the FY 26 default calculation and the FY 26 proposed budget. So the FY, not. So the FY 26 draft one operating budget is a 2.9% increase or $612,563 over the FY 25 adopted budget. The difference between the current year adopted budget and the FY 26 default is 0.8% of that or $162,822. And the difference between the FY 26 default calculation and the FY 26 proposed is 449,741 or 2.1%. And just as a reminder, this calculation excludes the special warrant articles that were passed in FY for FY 25 to give a true apples-to-apples comparison between the current year and the proposed operating budgets. Budget assumptions. At this time, we do not have the rate changes for health and dental from Health Trust. But expect to have that information next week and we'll present this in draft two next month. This year, Health Trust is not providing what they've done typically in the past, which is the guaranteed maximum rate. And then they typically do the actual rate in the spring. They're instead providing up the actual rate in October. I've been told October 8th. So I, as soon as I have that information, we will put that into the budget. So for purposes of this budget presentation, we're projecting a 10% increase in health and a 5% increase in dental as a placeholder until we have the final rates. This past year, July, this past July, rather, they had your retirement system set their rates for teachers at 19.23%, which is a reduction of 0.41% from the current year. And for non-teachers, a rate of 12.75%, which also is a reduction and that amount is 0.78%. For staffing changes, there is an additional social studies teacher that is proposed. This is due to. Um, this is, uh, due to, uh, minimum standards requirements as dictated by the New Hampshire. Um, Education Department, for more questions on that, I'll, uh, at, at the end of the presentation, I may turn it over to Dana to, to speak to that. Uh, one of the classroom assistant positions has been eliminated, and there are some modest adjustments to some of the office staff days, some increased, some decreased. Uh, really to better align with the time needed for those positions. So enrollment, this slide shows the actual and projected enrollment. FY twenty five enrollment is based on the very recent ten-one, um, actuals. Uh, FY twenty six projected enrollments are based on NESDEC projections that were completed in just this past spring. So according to the data, we have, uh, currently from NESDEC, enrollment is projected to increase slightly for FY twenty six. Uh, NESDEC is doing a ball projection, so when we have that information, we'll update this slide. Uh, this graph also shows actual teaching positions. Across, um, the span of years as well as projected positions for. Six, and you can see the trend lines for enrollment and teachers are moving downward together, uh, over the past fourteen plus years. Okay, so, um, typically we, uh, do a budget comparison by fund. Uh, just to provide some additional context. So this, uh, this comparison breaks out the budget by the three major funds. Uh, those funds are the general fund, which is where most of the budget is food service and grant. Grant funding is, is budgeted as an expenditure as well as offsetting revenue, uh, and that's remaining flat. Um, at this time, food service is increasing, um, somewhat, uh, but it is also budgeted with offsetting revenue, and as expected, the major source of the budget increase is in the general. I'm gonna go through these in a little, just highlighting some of the, um, the major areas where the changes occur. Um, from year to year. This is the budget broken down by the, what we call South Heagan Advisory Finance Committee category. Um, that group will be introducing later tonight, and they dive deeply into the budget and are split up into different subcommittees. Uh, so it's a nice way to be able to analyze, to, to be able to analyze the data, uh, in a manageable way. So curriculum, this is where the salaries and benefits, including health and dental for most staff will show up. Um, including that added staff member that we discussed. Uh, there's also some, uh, increases in furniture, some curriculum software, some equipment, equipment and supplies. For administration, a large part of the increase is, uh, the projected increase in the FAU budget apportionment that was presented. Uh, last week to the FAU board, I'm projecting that right now at about a hundred and one thousand. Um, that is still a projection and is based on some data that we need from, um, from the New Hampshire Education Department. So once we have those final numbers, that will be updated. Uh, there are some small increases in some non-personnel areas such as legal, printing, some graduation. Um, and then the remainder of the increase are for the non-PPT wages and benefits. For student services, the increases are primarily due to related services and out-of-district costs, um, as well as wages and benefits. For athletics, besides the wages and benefit increases, there are, um, some increases in interscholastic services and equipment, so the cost of officials have increased. Facility rental fees have increased. Uh, the new, the football program has grown, um, which has increased the need for additional equipment. For facilities, um, this includes utilities, maintenance costs, repairs, preventive maintenance. Most of the increase, increase in this budget is due to an increased cost in utility. We are at the end of our contract and have just recently renegotiated. We did well, but the, the deal that we had, uh, four years ago was really exceptional, so. We, we did fine, but we are gonna see an increase across all the budgets in electricity and gas. Uh, food service, the goal for food service is always to fully offset the budget by revenue, we have always been successful here, but that is the goal. Um, there is a major equipment replacement needed, uh, for next year, the, the dishwasher is at end of life. And a replacement cost right now is estimated at twelve-five thousand. So that's a big hit, um, for that budget. Technology, very modest increases, uh, primarily for equipment replacement, uh, transportation. Um, this is, there's a big change in this budget, um, we have a, um, a projected decrease in special education transportation. Um, based on student need, uh, and, uh, and our budgeting philosophy in some ways as well. So we'll get more into that as we, uh, get into the process of budgeting. Uh. It's, it's up. So these are just a couple of pie charts, um, just, just show the visual representation, broken out by those same categories. Uh, this one has salaries and benefits backed out, so you can see the salaries and benefits, and then. Um, the other categories, as expected, about seventy-four percent of the budget is allocated to salaries and benefits, which is typical for, for schools in New Hampshire. The next slide just includes those salaries and benefits, so you can see the total, so it's just a, uh, a way to break it out differently, as expected. The largest category is curriculum, followed by student services, and then. So this, uh, shows the change from the FY twenty five adopted budget. To the FY twenty five default, uh, the warrant articles are removed, and adjustments either increased or. Decreased or applied for contractual salaries and benefits, special education costs, including transportation. Uh, the SAU apportionment, which as I said, is still TBD, um, to deter, and any one-time expenditures to determine the default amount. So this year, the total change is a hundred and sixty-two thousand eight point two or point eight percent from the FY twenty five budget. So just some things to note on the defaults, um, we're in year one of the PPT agreement. They said that the actual retirement rate, uh, are decreasing, and the health and dental are projections at this point. The classroom assistant position is eliminated from both the proposed and the default as dictated by the RSA. The default application. So next, um, this is in response to request from the board to provide some information on, uh, conversations and. Decisions and cuts made prior to this presentation, so we have a slide called superintendent's cut, and I'm gonna turn this over to Mike, um, to go through that.
Yeah, this came out of a request out of the July retreat, uh, and conversation through there, it's something that we haven't had. Uh, before, prior to, uh, to this year, uh, it's always happened, uh, and. It happens at the building administrative level where there's things that are not proposed to the superintendent, and then when it gets to the superintendent. As the perspective that we have, uh, in, not only considering South Heagan's budget, but the other budgets around SE thirty nine. You know, what's a, a timeline of appropriateness and, and, and ways to fund certain projects, and so at this time, um. You see there some of the things and the amount of things that we chose not to include in the first draft of the budget, I can speak to these at, at a later date. Uh, and not that saying they're not valued or important, but at this point, you know, we have different plans to get there in some places, or maybe we can. Consider it at a later date. Um, it, it's not typical, and I can say this might not be included in other. Other districts because it hasn't been requested. So, uh, it is unique to South Heagan at this moment in time, it's requested the board, it's pretty self-explaining, and we can handle questions as the budget process goes.
So, um, this is the slide we typically provide, just to, um, basically is the difference between the default and the proposed, so these are. Those items that are at risk because they're not included in the default. Uh, so. This primarily includes in terms of wages and staffing, and the social studies teacher. Uh, there's an additional GTE driver as that program has grown, um, and then the non-PPT wages and benefits, uh, for a total. Amount of two thirty-six, three eighty-seven. Uh, facilities increases are primarily due to utilities, electricity and natural gas. Even though they're not the default, we're gonna have to pay for them, but they still are, um, at risk because we need to budget based on the current years. Curriculum, uh, this includes furniture, equipment, um, there's an out-of-district tuition, um, payment in there that is a requirement as well. Um, athletics are the equipment and, uh, facilities fees that we previously discussed. Uh, same with chap, it's the replacement equipment. Admin includes, uh, there's an increase for the SRO based on their, uh. That person's contract, it was a, uh, a new contract passed for the police in the town of Amherst. Uh, there's legal printing, some graduation costs, uh, the total difference there is four forty-nine, seven forty-one. So, um, just want to go over briefly the reserve funds, so there's currently six funds that are established for. The South Heagan Cooperative School District, the School Maintenance Fund, this was established to fund ongoing capital expenditures. Uh, our director of facilities provides that, uh, capital needs plan. A few years ago, and that was approved by the board. The request that's in that plan is for three hundred thousand dollars, the current balance is seven hundred and thirty thousand. That does include taking up the cost for phase two of the Skylight project, but does not include taking out the cost of phase one. So it's, because we're still under discussion, so we don't know what that is, and let that out, but there certainly will be a, a cost applied to that. So this slide will be updated as I get, uh, more current information. Um, the board will need to determine the funding source, administration is currently recommending that it's come from. Uh, Student Services Fund is at three hundred and eighty-five thousand. Um, we're looking to recommend a modest amount of thirty-five thousand to add to that. We're, uh, as I alluded to, we're budgeting tighter in special education, so the idea is that we, uh, would, would want to build up this fund for an unanticipated need. Uh, the technology fund has a balance of seventy-six thousand, and according to the three-year technology plan that was developed. The request included in there for this year is, uh, fifty thousand dollars. The Recreation Field Revolving Fund, or the Recreation Revolving Fund, um, request is also a continuance of previous year's requests. Um, and is part of that capital needs plan that was approved by the board, the current balance is four hundred and fifty thousand. As a reminder, this fund was rental fees, um, they also, there's also interest, actually, that for all of these funds that has been a nice addition for all of. In addition to the uncharted fund balance deposit. The proposed request for this is to be determined, as we're potentially looking to discuss the use of this fund. For things in addition to the turf field replacement. So, um. Uh, Superintendent Barry and Assistant Chief Chamberlain are looking to, at the time, with, initially with our recreation liaison, um, Stephen and Dana, to athletic. Um, to start the conversation, and then there'll be more conversations about that as we progress, uh, through the budget process. Uh, the unfunded liabilities fund for retirement is at twenty-six thousand, uh, there was a withdrawal this past year, uh, there's no recommendation at this time to add to the fund. And the vehicle fund was started last year, has a balance of twenty thousand, and the recommendation is to, um, fund this with an additional twenty thousand to save for future vehicles. So this is just a summary of the proposed warrant article at this time, um, including the budget and the five special warrant articles. And then finally, the budget review process, the next steps are included here, so so far, the, uh, South Heagan Advisory Finance Committee has met once and organized. Um, they chose an SE budget committee representative, um, will be meeting next week for that committee, we reviewed the calendar. Uh, made a few modest adjustments to it, we looked at last year's budget. File as a tutorial, um, for this year's budget review process, and we're here tonight with draft one presentation.
Thank you very much, um, a lot of information in there. I don't want, you know, we don't want specific questions because we need to go through the budget, but is there, are there any general questions that Amy could answer, Mr. Glover?
Um, you'll be sending us a link to the presentation.
Simply. It's in the, it's in the agenda now. Right, I'm not now, just now. Yeah.
You go into simply.
I think it was on yet.
Or now.
It was that earlier too.
I sent it the other way.
It was not.
Well, when I went.
And the. spreadsheet link.
It's in there as well. But I'm happy to share directly with people that. Not probably.
Can I ask a question? Um, go up to your. Oh, and under.
On the website.
On the twelfth slide under budget assumptions.
Yeah.
It says other staffing changes, there's a social studies teacher, which you said, well, would, I wouldn't hurt to have some sort of highlight on. Yeah, it says reduce one classroom assistant. And the reason I'm asking the question is if you go to the staffing history up on eight. Slide eight, I would assume to have seen a reduction, and I don't.
You don't, because it was budgeted, but it is not in the actuals for this year, so it was budgeted for this year, but it has not been filled.
Thank you.
For this year. And I can put the budget line if, if that would help, I can add, I can add a column. Budget for FY twenty five, it's fine.
Might get more, might get more confusing.
Yeah.
Like, I think this is probably, okay, all right.
Two quick questions, one for the subcommittee meetings that are happening the week of the fifteenth. The tenth, right then?
Yes, you want, perfect. And there are a link.
I think I gave you the days I could make it, around that, whatever, I'm happy to do that. Um, the social studies position, what I'm hearing is that we have to add that position. Am I understanding that right?
Yeah, I would ask, and so then what happens?
Yeah, so you can explain that, but more, uh, uh, like. So why do we end up in a default budget, but there's a position that we're required to add by state law? Like, are we just, we're out of luck, we just have your favor of something we're not required to have by state law?
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, so, so what we do, if the budget fails and we have a default, we have a bottom-line number. And, and I tend to do this for this board, we go through everything and make presentations to you all with. Different options on, you know, what we would recommend you do and don't do, and then it's up to the board to prove that, and then we have to put lots of budget transfers.
Corollary question, it's, if it's required by law, why is it? Probably go obligations were a definition.
It is, it's, it's required by the three oh sixes, and so, um, this budget is, it's monstrous, right? And we're talking, you know, one position, and, um, what I want to do is, it, it's easy to get attracted to when you have an add. But there's also been a lot of subtraction, so we can responsibly add. And there's a need for it, and Dana, I'll have you explain the initial need, if people have further questions around the, the add and addition of the, uh. Um, social studies teacher, we'll continue to get into it at the subcommittee level, we'll get into it at draft two, but if you want to say the original, original need, then we'll, we'll talk a little bit about.
So I raised it first before she does, can I say real quick, my, my concern, and I, I welcome the explanation. My concern is not the need, just, okay, so clearly we have this need, how do we pay for it if we end up in a default? So I wasn't meaning to it in any way apply that I didn't think we should have the need, I was just. It seemed like to John's point, it seems a little weird that the state tells us we can't include this in a default, but on the other hand, you're required.
Because it's not the position that's required by law, certain classes.
Yeah, well, that's the difference.
Well, the, it, it, it's actually because the default is based on the people that were hired. And voted on by, um, by the body, so there's, we, even if something is required outside of that, it doesn't matter. The, the body did not. That's why non-union health and dental increases are not included in the default.
That's why non-union helping dental increases are not included in the default. Those weren't voted on, but union or in this case PPC were voted on. But that's why they aren't. That's, that's the legal distinction.
All right, Dan, I didn't.
Hold on one second. Special add is required to be in the default.
Very rough.
Sure, yeah, I definitely, I absolutely expected that. I'm glad that we made the clarification that it's not the position that's included, but rather the courses that are required by the three oh sixes. So lots of information coming at you right now and can clarify as we go on, but.
What, by the three oh sixes?
Sure, minimum requirements for.
Okay.
Yep, so we initially intended to hire a social studies teacher to replace Tom Sawyer. When we, when we had to deal with that unfortunate event. However, as we were working with the, with making the schedule last year and looking at trends, we redirected those ones to hire an English teacher for this year. Lots of reasons why, it's really the cumulative impact of changes over time. So shifts in our senior seminar and AP courses. We had people pinch hitting in positions for a while, like a literacy coach or, you know, Matt McDonald. We transitioned to be the student learning coordinator. Sarah Niosing, our librarian, was teaching over her load for a while. We also are trying to make sure we're supporting our ninth grade separate flex classes, which are credit bearing and really important to the freshman experience. All of these kind of moving parts were made possible because we shifted when students are taking their economics credit, their economics credit. So backup, the economics credit is required by the three oh sixes. Our students used to take that in tenth grade. And graduation, the graduation requirements work that went up, went on for about two years, determined that based on students' schedules, making sure they still had flexibility, that that was really better placed in the eleventh grade year. So now we had a bubble, so we had a lot of juniors this year who have already taken that class. So we don't have a really high demand for it, but next year, all our kids coming up will need it. And we still have the same amount of people to, to cover those courses. So hiring this social studies teacher is going to ensure that all of our students can fulfill these graduation requirements. Additionally, that addition of the FTE in English allows us to be nimble and responsive to students' needs in other areas. And then we'll talk about later in personnel, some other changes that are impacting our humanities hearing. So high level stuff, I'm happy to get back into it later.
Great, thank you. I'm just going to ask, I think at this point, I'm going to ask, so he can finance committee. Jeannie, do you want to come forward and introduce your group and what meetings you've had and organized?
Sure. Hi, everybody. My, my name is Jeannie Luden. I'm the chair of the finance committee this year. And with us today are Raj Lutha, Heidi Hall of American from Vermont, and Howard Brown from Montana. And we fortunately got a quick tour before we came meeting. That's why we were a little late. It's so important for all of us to get a sense of what the facility is like, what is projected to be done in the future and how much work has been done to this point. The other thing is we did meet, as Amy said, in our organizational meeting. And then we divided ourselves with you all to buy function. And next week, next week, following week?
Following week.
Following week, we will all be meeting with our various departments. So we're looking forward to that. And then our next meeting is October twenty-second. So that follow on to our meetings so that we can share. And I would like to request, I've always, always do that daily. If she could just make sure that everybody in the finance committee gets that link to the budget. So that we access it right away.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I do actually appreciate the offer, Amy, to email it out separately. Because if you send one to everybody.
Sure.
I don't have to remember to pull up the minutes or agendas and I could save it.
We're down. And just for the public, it will be posted.
It's going to find now. It's one place, it's going to find.
They will be posted on the website tomorrow as well. As well as the question form. I didn't go through the budget file, but I think everyone here is familiar with the question forms.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, so I see that'll, that'll be open. So the question form will be open October fourth. And then, so everyone start submitting your questions. So when the budget meetings start happening, the fifteenth, they know they have at least a course. So the questions that might have been answered already or make sure that things are addressed. And then you can walk through the other information. Regarding the different budget areas, so I heard from some, I reached out to others. And John, I know you were out of town. I just sent you a quick text message to see if you could, if you were interested in any of the open areas. And I'll send this out to everybody. Yeah, there's, so there's athletics. I, I assign you to special, special services. They go with that. And then there's technology and athletics open as well. So I don't know which you would be interested in.
Technology.
All right. All right, so I will send this out, but what I have currently for administration, Dan, Vayu, Stephen O'Keefe. Athletics, I will join and if someone wants to join me.
So unfortunately, you're going to have to kick me off because I'm away then.
Gotcha. So we'll redo this. I'll redo this and send this out to people. That's all right.
Stephanie, if you can send that to me and then I'll send calendar invites to everybody.
Yeah, yeah. I'm going to have to redo.
Okay.
Based on that and see if we got, make sure we haven't gone right. I think we're okay, but. All right, so I will redo that and send it out to everyone, including Amy. So we're not getting confused here too much. Anything else on the budget? We're, I was going to move on. All right. Principal updates. So Dana.
So really excited to be here. I think Chelsea put in assembly like a bulleted list of topics. So we are going to start with Brad. You know, he did introduce himself. But he'll talk a little bit more, a little bit more in depth about what brought him to South Eagan and what he's been working on. We're really excited to have him forward. So give him a couple of minutes of your time to start. Please do.
So just like a little personal background, I'm from Western Massachusetts, Northwestern Massachusetts, upward Vermont, New York, Massachusetts. Me, I am the son of a kid maker and a hair dresser on their way to becoming a teacher out here in New Hampshire. Prior to this, I was, I pursued MBA. I taught in North Adams, Massachusetts, where I started a program for severely adverse kids who are identified most likely to drop out, myself along with a humanities teacher and a social worker. We created what was called the E3 Academy and it helped service about ten percent of the population of that, of the community. Again, those are most likely to drop out. Realizing that is something I loved doing, working with kids. My wife and I decided to relocate to big city Manchester, New Hampshire. In the process, I got a job at Pinkerton Academy. My wife is a special educator, working in a Montessori school prior to that. So we are an education family. Pinkerton Academy was a math teacher and for six years I worked there in their freshman academy, working primarily as an interdisciplinary team lead until I took a job at Bedford High School, where I taught in their math department. Through all those nine years, I was considered a distinguished educator, which is very flattering. And then I applied to South Eagan High School on the reputation of a school that was really profound and incredible in its ability to create a democratic environment for our students while also pursuing a rigorous academic curriculum. So here I am today. In terms of my just vision in general, I truly believe that high school is a bridge for our kids between who they are and what they have the capacity to become. I believe that as teachers, as administrators, as staff at all levels, we are in the business not only of teaching a topic, but also in helping our students realize their own capacity for their own excellence in however way they define it. I, I believe that relationships are at the core of what we do. And every relationship starts with a conversation. I think every student is deserving of an adult, a trusted adult or someone who is invested in their success. So I try to bring that to the job every day and inspire the teachers I work with to do the same. The classroom, my goals for the classroom is to build agency for our teachers to have tier one interventions that satisfy their own needs in their classrooms. I support them in making decisions that are appropriate for their respective classrooms and the specific students that they work with every single day. In terms of South Eagan and myself, I really think, and I am incredibly thankful for all the people who took part in the hiring process. It was a, while it was, took a lot of time and it was like a lot of investment, I'm sure on everyone. It was a very fulfilling and eye-opening one. I think the intent of this school does a lot of work for the, for the stuff that we do. I think we are all going throughout our, our day really with the best interest of our students in mind. And you see that as you walk around, and I spend a lot of time walking around this place. I believe that we are also committed, these are things that I agree with as well. We are in the business of an immersive learning environment. And that means from the second these kids get here, the second they leave, from lunch to the passing period to the classroom lessons, they are in a learning environment as a priority. And we've done that with our advisory program in our separate flexes in the learning commons and in every, every moment the kid are here. From a disciplinary standpoint, because that's the other part of my job, I think every student is warranted themselves the situation and the circumstances leading up to the respective actions. And those are considered with every single disciplinary decision that I make. I take a lot of responsibility in saying that this is the result of your actions and those three considerations, who, what, and what led to that point when I make those decisions with the team that I work with. I have made it a commitment for me to celebrate South Eagan, everything that it is to be here, to be as visible as possible. I know when I see myself in the cameras all day long to serve, to advocate for the needs of our students and also to support the learning of every member of the community. So thank you again for letting me be here.
Thank you. Thank you, Brad. So priorities, our building priorities this year, there are three. You've seen them, advancing the active stewardship of our mission, promoting learning and growth by cultivating a shared vision for impactful teaching and learning. And then three is about promoting wellness through the execution of our tiered supports. All of those are aligned to the framework. So we cover all the framework goals except for the facilities, although I could probably squeeze it in there somewhere within each of those priority areas. And I'm really excited about the progress that we've already made. So you've heard about priority one, as Maya talked about, the work that we're putting into community council to reinvest, make sure that they're full, make sure that people are coming, make sure that everyone is well-trained and prepared, right? The, the retreat included all the students, but it also included our community members, right? Because we have to work with them too, to build their capacity to engage in that kind of way. Forums is another way that we're building their capacity to fulfill this mission statement. We've re-engaged with our PTSA, which is so exciting with that partnership. And then our staff steering is, is, our staff steering group is also kind of interested in looking in terms of like, what, what does this group do and how do we exist? So lots of work going on in that area. Priority two is kind of the thing, we talk about making sure the big thing is the big thing, right? The big thing here is teaching and learning. So this is our big work. Aligned to priority two so far this year, supervision evaluation, which I'll talk about. We just are wrapping up our NEWA testing, which will impact the way that we're supporting some of our struggling learners as well as pushing some of our learners who are ready for more challenge. Our structural leadership team is up and running and talking about how to build in student feedback into their reflections. We've got self-studies going on right now in our English and math department. Elizabeth will talk a little bit later about senior project. We have our first year writing intensive course underway, which we're very excited about. And then a renewed partnership with the SAU in terms of how we're interfacing with Liz Cannon and Heather Jennings in their roles. I think we've got a lot of really great work happening. In terms of priority three, which is about really wellness, social, emotional and behavioral supports, our student support team has completed a reevaluation of its priorities. Again, partnering with Heather and Liz around student service issues. We've increased our collaboration with families and outside stakeholders. We're streamlining some of our procedures. Brad has really spearheaded that work with attendance, making sure that kids are here and accounted for and using the time. And then our, our focus on, as Brad was talking about, a relationship-based approach with kids and families. I'd love to talk a little bit more about supervision and evaluation. You've heard us talk about this. This will be the fourth year of kind of us executing these, these practices. And we're really excited for it because we're seeing the dividends that it's paying in terms of impact on student learning. That's the focus of, of the, of the, of the whole practice. It's not to do the box checking, it's not to put on a dog and pony show when someone's in the room. It's to ensure, ensure student learning outcomes. So this year, we are focused on goal setting with teachers. We've been focusing on feedback and we've been focusing on classroom observations. We're still doing that, but this year we're adding in a layer of goal setting to make sure that educators that are in year one, that are setting their professional goals for three years, making sure that they're empowered to create really high leverage goals that are related to our building priorities and our framework. So we're excited about that. To date, so over the last month, we've created, we've conducted over a hundred and sixty learning walks. That's two visits per staff member that are accompanied by a note in their mailbox that talks about the great things that we're seeing. So we're proud of that and we're ready to start our structured, our structured visits next week. We've also really enjoyed the conversations that we're having with folks that are in their first year, either with us at South Eagan or in their evaluation cycle, establishing a foundation for that collaboration that'll go on through the rest of the year. Going to throw it over to Elizabeth Barr next too. She'll give you an update on senior project and our math self-study.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Dana. So I'm excited to talk about senior projects really quickly. I know that some more detailed updates have been provided over the course of really the end of last year through the summer and early fall. But I want to run down kind of the why, what and how of where we're at with senior project right now as this work is always evolving and ongoing. So as you all know, some updates to senior project were envisioned based on feedback from all of our stakeholders, students and staff, some community members, right, really looking at some founding documents and digging deeply into past practices. We're really excited because we focused a lot of our work as a staff last year on, again, digging deeply into senior project and thinking of the ways that we can use that democratic voice of our staff to put together a vision of what senior project at its best version can be. And we're getting ready to pilot those changes this year. And a part of that pilot is going to involve a lot of feedback and a lot of meeting time and review and checking in. I think that would be a really appropriate time to acknowledge some kind of conflicting communication that went out earlier this week regarding the role of community members on our senior project panels. The initial communication that was sent out was mistaken in saying that we did not want to involve community members on senior project this year. We've been having a lot of really focused, intense conversations around senior project. And we're grappling with some things about what senior project will look like in this newest iteration. We know that in this newest iteration, it involves community members panels. So we've sent out some clarifying information around that. And furthermore, to help like dig deeply into this issue and the idea of, you know, our community owning senior project, we're looking forward to kind of having a focus group of sorts next week, bringing in some folks who have been on senior project panels before and sharing with that some of the conversations we've had and hearing and learning from their experiences and seeing what ideas they can bring to the table. So apologies for the miscommunication and error there. And we're excited to partake in that going forward this year. The what of senior project for this newest revision really involves students having even more control and voice in what their senior project looks like. So beyond just saying, you know, this is my passion and this is what I want to pursue, we're really empowering students through a new senior project planner to demonstrate in a actually truly capstone way, the way that they have mastery of our portrait of a graduate. And the planner that they're working with is all designed and worked around those competencies. So instead of following more of a checklist, students are proposing to their mentor, into their panel, no, this is how I'm going to show I'm an effective educator. This is how I'm going to show that I'm. And it's opening up, what we think are a lot of really exciting, not only pathways to a senior project, the way in which they are completing it, but also what the product could be and what the presentation could be. but also what the product could be and what the presentation could be. And you know, with change, things always get a little bit scary because you you haven't lived the entire thing yet, but there's a lot of great enthusiasm. This is such an awesome opportunity to live even more what we love the most about South Eagan, which is empowering students and letting them have that voice. And senior project is the perfect place to do that. It's their last final big thing they do with us as students. They get to show us all that they've learned, not just in terms of academic skill, but also in those like collaboration skills and self-centered skills. Um, the how is always the part that I'm most invested in, right? How do you execute it? We have a task force that started work over the summer that is meeting weekly along with the senior project coordinators, who are meeting even more frequently than weekly as we're getting this off the ground. We're devoting our staff meeting time this year to doing a lot of real professional development around what this looks like and running through different scenarios and providing resources and offering up that support to folks for our students. We're going to earmark Wednesdays in advisory for seniors to be paired with different advisories so they can talk through their projects and troubleshoot things with their advisors and with other students. So, we're really trying to create a wraparound support so that we know we're doing something new, but we have a lot of different resources in place. So, our our staff is excited. We had our first um school year staff meeting devoted to senior project just yesterday and it was really great. There was a lot of energy in the room. So, that was exciting. I'm moving forward to, alright, I'm I'm still talking. So, another another topic that I know is of high interest is our math self-study. That work also um kicked off into high gear over the summer and it is continuing. Um, the math department designed and administered a start of year math mindset survey. They are aiming for one hundred percent participation. They have almost five hundred responses so far. And that's going to be a really valuable data set for them to look like because it's going to establish a baseline understanding of students' perceptions of mathematics, the way they approach learning, student definitions of six of success in that subject, ideas about classroom practices around the instruction of math and how confident they are in their mathematical abilities. That data, starting in November, is going to be examined in the whole department alongside some more quantitative metrics for scores, competency scores, standardized test results to give that really comprehensive view of how well our practices in curriculum instruction are supporting students and identifying where additional support is needed. Um, the math department was also able to do some great vertical articulation um and outlined learning progression on the district-wide collaboration day in August. So, they did that, creates that a room dwell that those teachers are were in a room together and got to talk about their own scope and sequence. Um, the other thing that the math department is currently working on right now um to further this goal is working on a comparison of what we're calling the articulated curriculum and the lived curriculum. You have, you know, as a teacher, you always have a really great vision of all of the understandings, all of the things that you will get through in a year. And then sometimes there's the reality of like, oh yeah, we have to dig deeper into that part. Maybe we didn't develop this understanding as much as possible. So, they're going to be looking for trends between the articulated and lived curriculum and then, like I said, do a really deep data dive starting in November to start cross-referencing all this data and identify where things are in harmony and where maybe there is some distance. So, they've gathered a lot of information and they're entering into that with really open minds and no assumptions about what works and what does not work with math instruction at South Eagan.
And before Brad finishes up with an advisory update, one thing that I am really uh pleased to talk about in terms of the math self-study is you know, we know that these 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 uh programmatic reviews are really important just in terms of best practice. But uh, this is also really timely because as we were doing our graduation requirements work, we were getting feedback about math curriculum that really wasn't well placed in terms of what we were doing with graduation requirements, but is very well placed as we're doing this self-study. So, I my my hope is that folks see kind of the responsiveness of the work that we're doing and that there's a place for this feedback. And uh, with close to five hundred responses out of seven hundred kids, like we're we're on our way to making sure kids know that they have, students and families have a way of of making sure that their opinions and voices and uh kind of mindsets are for as we move forward. It's great. Um, the last thing, I I thought we'd be at twenty minutes and it's up to you to get it. No pressure is the advisory update.
Uh, thanks, Dana. Uh, one of the first things I was tasked with uh, slide one was uh overseeing the advisory group's summer work. Uh, it was a great experience uh to learn how South Eagan's advisory program worked. Uh, we do advisory as a means to an end to develop our students into strong and resourceful learners while connecting them with our incredibly talented like staff and teachers. Uh, this summer, we focused on that recommitment to what advisory's purpose was kind of at the heart of what we do here at South Eagan. Um, and that's to be a space to build the relationships between our teachers and our students. Um, in that process, on the first day, we looked at a review of um the previous year's benchmarks and as a group, we determined that um something would be helpful in conveying this information to all of our constituencies. Uh, what is a common language that allows teachers to target in a unified way um the specific goals that we have and make them consistent across um our grades in many ways, but certainly across the advisories themselves? Uh, the long-term vision and goal of the advisories really is to build capacity in our students for the social, emotional, critical thinking, um organizational skills in order to promote community-centered uh solutions, build resilience and in really community service and kind of what it is to be a member of our of the South Eagan community. Uh, all that in addition to meeting the demands of the classroom and their and their general advice. Uh, we were fortunate enough to receive a grant for the Wayfinder Program, an online resource for activities uh that will service the various needs of our advisories. Um, and this was presented to our advisors, our class level advisors. Um, and we did a full training that through the Wayfinder Program uh and it was promoted as a source for activities that support these established benchmarks. Uh, we had people within our within our group who took it upon themselves to organize these various activities into collections. Uh, those collections in service of of the specific language that we use to support our benchmarks. For instance, uh, building activities to support organization, uh, community building, future planning, responsible citizenship, goal-setting, communication and student agency, um in addition to like year-end reflections. Uh, the advisory coordinators are currently sharing wayfinders of the week so we can get the most out of this grant and the and this resource. Um, it is incredibly valuable. Um, and it's an effort to promote it as a resource that teachers can use in their classrooms and in their advisories every day. Uh, and then to further support this mission um of what this this uh recommitment to advisory, our class advisors are planning during our Saber Spotlight um sessions where they can offer guidance and even sample situations and concerns to our advisors in an effort to prepare them for uh anything that might come up in their.
That's twenty minutes on the note.
Yeah.
That's why I was. Um, happy, I mean, I'm sure you took all of that and like I'm happy to answer questions uh uh on anything from that or from this.
Sure. One thing I would point out and we'll take questions. So, I understand that, that I hear that the math was looking at seventh through twelfth alignment. I understand also what's happening with science.
So, thankfully, it was able to happen in all the areas. Because of the last PD day that we had, we really we were able to focus on vertical articulation. So, science got together, performing arts got together, while language got together, right? Uh, English and social studies got together. So, that is happening.
I think in particular, just to highlight science, the the work that came out of that time was so great that they've now independently planned some AMS South Eagan instructional rounds to get into each other's classrooms. They've identified department meetings where they can partner together. The same lab is happening, you know, and a few different classes. So, they were able to identify and start problem solving something. So, that's really exciting.
That's awesome. Yeah. Okay. We want to go by topic that they said, or do you just want to ask your random question if I, if you raise your hand? Have I asked people to raise their hand? Start there.
So, you're. The notater, my hand is sore.
Hmm.
Uh, it's top level questions. Will this, will this be presented in a in a writing that is detailed that can be can be studied and and questions can be formulated and have a.
So, yeah, I mean, principal reports will come out and you'll get updated on these topics throughout the rest of the year, but in between when they are here, it's more of a conversation about. And as we're learning to work a little bit differently where we, you know, value the administration's time, so in between meetings, every time Dana is not here, you'll have an in-depth principal report like you've received in the past. And then at this meeting, we'll have updates on the conversation, you know, the work that's happening. So, I'm not going to have the principals do reports every month and I'm not going to have them come every day.
But, can always listen to it. It'll be a recording of a meeting.
I mean, those principal reports that you receive every month are well done. A breadth of information, far more than anything I've ever done in my life as a principal. So, I I feel like it's suffice.
Alright. Questions?
Some questions, some comments. One, I love your enthusiasm. Seriously, I think it's contagious. I think it's a really good thing for connecting with students and other people. And you know, I like that as we look at recommitting advisory, we've got someone who's enthusiastic and motivated who's leading that. So, thank you for that. Um, I guess I could say I like all of your enthusiasm, but you're new. I, I am, uh, when you talk about the senior projects and it being a pilot, like is it a pilot for the class? Is it a pilot for a portion of the class? Okay.
Yeah, it's a pilot for the class. We have, we had conversation around, right, about the the most appropriate way to roll it out and ultimately we decided if we wanted the feedback to be representative and for it to be like a true senior project experience, the best thing to do would be to have our full current senior class engage in the pilot.
Okay. And then at the end of the year, I assume there'll be some retrospective on that and that's.
Oh, yeah.
A pilot on whether or not, what what changes or what keeps going.
Absolutely.
And then I, what was my last thing? Oh, back to my enthusiasm. I really appreciate the work going into student council this year. I think I said, your grads aren't, but you know, my concern has been that it's that that instead of engaging the more over time, they've slowly just become engaged less and they kind of become more insular and just what are the students' individual things they want to work on instead of thinking of themselves as a democratic school. So, I I appreciate hearing the emphasis that we're trying to open that back up and educate that and have someone who's been involved over the years come in and teach that. So, those are my, it's not, I mean, I was a hard grill, understand, but I, those, that's my feedback. Thank you.
Uh, I wrote a bunch of stuff down. Um, and by the way, I kind of liked this meeting. So, it's more of a conversation and dialogue and there that you spent a lot of time preparing for tonight. So, thank you for that. And uh, starting off first, Brad, for lots of great feedback from parents and more importantly, kids, talking about your enthusiasm going to Indiana head said, they're excited that you're excited and uh, you know, people just so far, they they love you and love to understand like what stood out so far this year in in the hunch, month and a half that you've been here. It's uh, see soon. Uh, uh, it's it's incredible how you hear, again, New Hampshire's a small state. You hear things about places like South Eagan. In my personal life, I have very good friends who I met at the collegiate level who had found, I found out when I was applying for this job, attended South Eagan, um, talking to them in the parking lot, like after I received the offer, after I started applying the parking lot of the gym and just being like, hey, I know you went to South Eagan. What's what's like, goes some of the best years of my entire life um spent there. Um, and finding out that when you walk the halls here, you're seeing kids experience that same that same exact thing. Um, we have a really, really, really talented and committed group to making sure that every kid that goes, starts here on the first day of freshman year to the second they walk across, perceive that handshake with a diploma, that the experience they have here at South Eagan is something special and uniquely built for them. Um, and and also in fact, like they call them Brad in the hallways. I'm trying to figure out, every person I meet, I gotta, guys gotta, it's like, so now I'm saying, it's an adult or a kid, like, who are we talking about? Uh, it takes them getting used to, but it adds like a level of like community and and like warmth to the to the experience itself. That in addition to the the parents that I have reached out to, very receptive to the opportunity to like help their kids learn and grow. Um, mistakes happen. It's what happens. And like the idea that we can work collaboratively towards making every kid um have a more rich experience here has been really, I've been thankful for it. Awesome. Yeah, like three people came to and said, Brad's awesome. Okay. That's great. Um, Dana, I just want to also compliment you.
I'm hiring Brad.
We'll roll out at the kickoff of the beginning of the year really to the entire month of September. I think there's a different energy or a different vibe going on this year that is really resonating. There's excitement. There's a really cool kind of feel uh to 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 the high school experience. And so, I think that's really a reflection of things that I think you worked on last year and you're actually implementing this year. So, awesome job with that. Um, uh, Elizabeth, I don't necessarily have great compliments for you, but.
That's okay.
A really great job, too. When when you talk a little bit about the math and and the self-study, one component to that and and spoken with Mr. Barry about this a couple of times, how you measure success, right? So, we talked about, and I'm going to talk a little bit about sort of the uh, the the feedback loop that we reviewed back in the spring, like we went through that process, but where are we starting to now identify that this is actually working? Because from a community standpoint, it's through federalized and state report, right? So, how are we measuring internally whether or not this is actually working and how we're taking change?
That's a great question. I think there's both um like small, like short term and long term answers to that. One of the things that makes a robust self-study different than just good practice is that it culminates in an action plan and that action plan contains metrics by which, how you're going to measure the success of it, right? That these steps are going to be taken to address the shortcomings that we've identified and here's how we'll know if these steps were successful or not. So, as the math department is just embarking on that, they haven't had a chance to articulate it yet. But when I was working with the math domain leader in preparation for this meeting, you know, even specifically to the beginning of the year survey, the start of your math mindset, um, they want, they have also worked on an end of year math mindset. And as they're creating the articulated and lived curriculum templates, they're naturally adjusting their curriculum as they go. Right? They're making those good improvements that all good teachers make as they're doing that reflective study. And they're hoping to see in that end of year math mindset, some real tangible signs that the changes they may have like to the shift in perceptions from students and also shift in student performance as well. So, they're putting in these these short-term things in place to see how the incremental, like good updates they're making are working and then also some much bigger things.
So, are you as an administrator, are you interjecting into that process to see and identify fault as it happens live to say, maybe need to pivot off this because of X?
Yeah, one of the things that I'm excited to be doing this year now that I'm, you know, in the second year of the Dana faculty role is meeting with each of the domain leaders at least once a week to sit down and just have that time be devoted to what's going on in the department. And in math, a lot of it is how is the math self-study looking and what is your next step? Like, let's look at what you've uncovered and how are we going to respond to that? And let's talk about pre four now. Let's talk about four two. Let's talk about four three. So, it's really exciting for me to get to have that conversation with the domain leader and also, you know, with with the teachers as we're in their classrooms and seeing the good work that they're doing.
I do want to say just a couple of things related to this notion of metrics. When you say like, you know, as a community, we look at it and we look at the standardized test form. We do too, right? Like the framework tells us that we're going to shoot for eighty percent proficiency. No one in the state of New Hampshire right now is is there, but we're we're working towards that. And one of the and and folks that are involved in the math self-study also know that. So, one of their um, data dives that Elizabeth was talking about that's coming fully later in November is kind of a crosswalk of what are we seeing in PSAT data? What are we seeing in NWA data? What are we seeing in SAT data? And how does that align to what we're seeing in our assessments? How does that align to what we're seeing in our classroom? Are we preparing kids for these for these challenges that we know that they're going to face that are consequential for them? Um, so that's a huge part of of the of the puzzle as well.
Cool. I'm glad to to hear you say that. I've only got two more things for the best and, you know, the important part is to remember that as a parent of a student here, as a parent of a graduate here, like we recognize that this educational experience individualized, right? And so, my student's going to be doing completely different to somebody else. I mean, this kid's going to be doing different from maybe a AP track Ivy League type types who, so those types of things actually happen, but to the non-parent, to the taxpayer, to the resident in the community, they don't see that stuff, right? And so, that's why when we take a look at standardized testing, it is important, right? It's important in the community to measure because there's no other measurement of the quality of stuff that we as parents and and students may actually. So, thank you. I'm really happy to hear you say that. Um, the the next thing I've got in terms of of the actual pilot, eh, actually, you answered that one. Hey, actually, you answered that one. Brad, the Wayfinder program, can you talk a little bit about that? I tried to Google it while, while you were talking and the website's dead and it's not launching, so what is that?
Aren't we, are you on the right websites?
The website is not Wayfinder, no. It's Wayfinder Select.
Well, yeah, I got it.
So, uh, Wayfinder is a collection of like tested activities. Like really, when it comes down to it, it's a, it's a clearinghouse for tested activities that focus on various, um, of those like kind of soft skills. That we develop in our students, so like team building, civility, communication. You can type into it like, and this is what we did when we were testing it with, with staff, is we were in the theater, we had the whole staff and said, think about something. That you want your kids to learn and come up with a word to define it. So people were like, well, I want my kids to just like be able to have a conversation with someone who disagrees. Okay, what would we call it? We call it, I don't know, civility or understanding. And you can type words like that into it, it will create activity, it actually generates activities that are fully fleshed out. Um, they indicate how much prep is required, the resources required, um, whether there are supporting materials. And it just generates like a very quick, and I think you call it like lesson plan, but a very quick lesson plan of how to administer that. Um, and example was, you did, it was, it was like points, it was like targeted points. You like sat and thought of like, what were some targeted points for conversation? And it was like a turn and talk about those. But I've seen kids do ones, it was like, uh, being a global citizen, I think it was something along those lines. And it was one of those like CTO games where like you can pick a place like in the world based on like what a picture is seen from, uh, Google Maps. So it gives kids like an opportunity and teachers like an opportunity to have like a really robust lesson without all of the like threat that goes into it. Um, so on the fly, they can really build some of those like valuable, again, soft skills that we, we like to look for in our program.
Yeah, and one of the reasons that we, we are so excited about the program is because it is a fully, like it, it is actually K to twelve. Wayfinder, and so you see them identifying the, you know, six skills that we're trying to work on with students over time. And it's, you know, developmentally appro, at the developmentally appropriate level for each grade level. So we have nine to twelve, so you can, so, so teachers and staff are able to see, okay, in ninth grade, when we're talking about community. We mean this, you know, acclimating to a new community, what high school means to you. And in, in twelfth grade, when we work on community, it means preparing to launch out into a much bigger world. And what does that mean it looks like?
So I mean, what the collections part I spoke about, and the collections was set up by one of our class advisors, um, in, Karen Isom, uh, who's wonderful. And she said, let's create a ninth or twelve grade for goal setting. And they identified that it's the language we want for one of our benchmarks, goals setting. I go into there and I find four items that were determined to be worthwhile for goal setting. And they were activities, fifteen minutes on internal goal setting, twenty-five minutes on goal setting motivation, twenty minutes on a whoop goal setting. Uh, twenty minutes on SMART goals one point oh. When I pop into one of those, I can go into an activity guide and it outlines the prep required. So you need a pen and paper, it has a slide deck pre-built, I'm like, uh, what is your goal, talking points? And then it goes into like how to, how to administer it. So directions, display the first slide on the board. Let students know that throughout different parts of their life, there may be different goals we are working on. And it goes through kind of like all the different aspects of SMART goals, that it has educator tips, um, discussion questions for afterwards and talking.
That's such a great.
It's awesome, so. And the group put together, again, like identified stuff, so people are having to fish through it. Um, as part of like this, uh, Saber Spotlight planning time, and again, Wayfinder will be, we're pushing this out to our staff.
You know, again, this came out of the graduation part that we did, where we identified, hey, we're giving credit. We're assigning academic credit to advisory, and we have to have some way to measure that students are gaining competency in this. And so our teachers here at South Egan developed those benchmarks. What does it mean at South Egan to do this stuff? And this is the work that is underpinning what they've identified. Right? Yeah.
Last comment, Steve Chin, throwing him to the spotlight. Is I consider it best practice though, with other districts that have rolled out advisory across the state, to have this type of structure?
Yeah, I mean, Dana, other schools using Wayfinder, um, they're finding, uh, ease of plan, ease of implementation supports because they're pretty busy. Um, so yes, this program is evidence research-based, um, it was a Title IV grant through, fed through the New Hampshire ED. Uh, but yes, this is a research evidence-based practice that was funded by the Title IV grant. Also including staff as well as the, the training.
Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. I would just add, I think the website is working now, and I believe what they're saying. It very, very fits in with, you know, the students we're trying to create here. You know, seventy-one percent felt more competent contributing to their communities and beyond, so not, you know. Two percent, two times socially aware, is engaged at school, uh, so. I'd like that integration to the greater world. Other questions?
You just can't put my topics on the supervision evaluation piece. The, I love the goal setting with teachers. You emphasized first-year teachers, and the question is, is that really for all teachers?
So it's for anyone that's in their first year at South Egan or in the first year of their recertification. So all staff needs to recertify every three years with the state of New Hampshire. And that's when our, our PD master plan has teachers setting their goals. So anyone that's new to us, or anyone that has been in one of their research.
Good, thanks.
And just a reminder, the goals now aligned with their, not just their professional development, but their evaluation. We're now linking those, which is considered best practice. So Dana, Elizabeth, Brad, observe a teacher who needs to maybe work on some technology, they develop PD goal. A technology that link is critical to be efficient and to have a high leverage. You want to leverage your professional development to support what they find in the evaluation process. And they develop a culture where this is incredibly collaborative and credit. So that increases the odds that's actually taken hold. That's the, it's the nature of the collaboration work. But linking professional development and their evaluation process is best practice to produce some efficient and high level.
The corollary to that is, um, would that goal setting be applied to non-teachers as well? Essentially every adult in the building, the one on the table.
Yes, so we do have, so, uh, primarily Brad and I and Katie Roll are working with support staff. Um, we patrol, work with some support staff as well, so those meetings also happen. It's not quite as structured or, or, uh, uh, formulated, but those conversations are happening with all of the staff. Whether it's, like Steve said, uh, at the end of the year when we're doing the evaluation with support staff. We might talk about, okay, so here's how the year went, right? And so what do we want to work on next year? And then beginning of the year, we're talking about, all right, so remember, this is what we're working towards. Because everybody has a very important role to play here, but looks different, right? So yes, happening crossfit.
Fantastic. On the senior project piece, I, I, it sounds, sounds very intriguing, but how you've laid it out. You know, the, the idea of having more student control is, I think that's very consistent with our agent, student agencies. And kind of at the core of our culture. But I'm curious if you're considering senior projects evolving, whether or not for certain students. Who might want to be in control of their project earlier than a formal start date. They might be, they're in college applications, maybe they're athletes, maybe they're taking high-value, very difficult courses, and they're packing that in. Student, or any student, might want to start in junior year, might want to get empirical data gathering over the summer. They could potentially be done before, uh, senior year officially begins if they had an opportunity to build it. Perhaps even connect it with their junior learning project experience and so on. So is that a pathway that, or visioning? Enabling students to path, to follow, should they choose?
So I, I would say it's not a path, it's not a pathway that we're envisioning in terms of like. This is, this is an option and it's fully fleshed out, but it is absolutely something that we want to make a possibility for, for students who might. Be interested in it, right? So this, so this year, we want to go through the process with everyone. And then, you know, once we're ready to move forward, rolling this out in junior year, absolutely should be a possibility. You know, there's different checkpoints that students will have to meet, right? So we still, the new project actually puts a lot more, um, emphasis on those panel discussions. So things like that, you know, the tiki-taki logistics need to be fleshed out if students want to do it, um, outside of the prescribed timeline. But we do want to make it something that matches with what students need, right? That's also part of, part of the pilot includes students creating their own timeline. Um, and this year, obviously, the timeline is like October to May. But in the future, could it be previous year to earlier? Yeah, like maybe. Um, but we think that beginning it this way, we're, we're getting students used to going, uh, you know, I'm gonna apply early action. And November's gonna be packed for me, I'm gonna give myself a lighter load on senior project this month and pick it up here. Um, that's the work that we want to begin. So the students will be prepared to take on something like you're saying, if it went to that.
Okay, good, nice to hear. Math self, self-study. Yay, seven to twelve collaboration day. I'm very happy to hear that. And, um, I wonder if that was also including the administration, just having a conversation with each other as well as the teachers.
Absolutely, I mean, I think that we have to give thanks to the SAU for, for giving us that time and creating the structure for us to create that day. Um, and then also, those structures also exist within the SAU, where, where the principals meet, uh. More than twice a month as a full group anyway, to kind of discuss. And we now have the, um, framework as kind of something that's unifying all of us. So we are able to have those targeted discussions. And then there are administrators attached to different departments that are collaborating around the work that's going on.
So that's excellent, and the, you said, um, that the, the teachers are choosing voluntarily to, to collaborate. Further beyond just the, the day. And, and setting up regular meetings, is that what I heard, or?
So, so far, our, our science departments have, uh, requested time from each of the building administrators to say like, hey, so we all have. An early release day on this day, can we get together, can we use that time to get together? And the answer was emphatically, yes, please. So that is starting.
And that was, that was organic interest.
Organic from the teachers. If you build it, they will.
I want the advisory to, to. First, as you mentioned, Brad, we, finding common language, could you flesh that out a little bit? Visualize what that meant.
Absolutely. Uh, so as it stands right now, and I'm, well, I have a spreadsheet that. Uh, as it stands right now, as it stood at the end of last year, there was, uh, there were common activities that kids were doing. So they were doing their, ooh, my spreadsheet here. What we wanted to do was have a way to communicate effectively what the kids were doing, um, at the respective points of the year. So for instance, if you looked at the ninth grade year, there was student-led conference, uh. Student-led conference prep, identify, um, to be the best part of our description was students prepare for their student-led conference. By completing assigned sheets, uh, and activities. There was students participate in an aspect of South Egan community outside of the classes. Students participate, so they were, they were like these long phrases that people had to do in like, in order to like figure out where they fit within that. And what we did is we came up with si, more simplistic language so that we could communicate it like, can, uh, consistently across, across the board. So things like that, that first one, like students prepare a student-led conference by completing assigned sheets and activities. We just called organization, and the topic that we're looking for is the student-led conference, conference prep. The students participate in an aspect of South Egan community outside of classes. We changed it to community building, identify South Egan connections. Um, and it just shortened the language so that it was more easily communicated, um, and more easy, and therefore like the, the, the skills were more easily targeted. And if they had to be adjusted in any way to support our students, they, they could without having like this. The Latin better phrase, like more cumbersome thing that the teachers had to communicate to their students.
The other thing that it did was, uh, articulate those same skills, um, vertically, right? So, so now everybody has an organization goal, everybody has a communication goal, everybody has a planning goal. What that goal looks like is different at each grade level, but everybody's growing in the same direction.
Building capacity, there was a lot of the so, social, emotional component in advisories, the division, and then the community, this academic component. And, and like conversation of goals with the teachers and so on. Is, is goal setting the center also of the advisory curriculum? Or student goals and following up on the goals that students design for themselves. Uh, inquiries as to setting new goals, when you achieve your goals, and maybe inquiries as to what happens if you're not meeting your期望.
Um, so for instance, some, some of these kind of language are things like future planning. So kids are looking at goals, like what it is to project, not just for like this current year, but, um, at the eleventh grade level. Like, what does the future look like? Uh, when you get to twelfth grade, um, there is, uh, there's a reflection at the very end. That says a senior graduation reflection, um, where students are looking back at, at their general experience here. So there is a lot of, um, it, there is a lot of looking at goals as a, as an evolving experience with our kids. Um, and then you're having these conversations, and we're encouraging people to have these conversations with their kids in like more ad hoc fashion. Um, with our, in the individual environment of the advisory as well.
Uh, the other thing that I'm really happy about with, in terms of goal setting and advisory, is, uh, oftentimes we talk about, oh, this is best practice for kids. And then we don't offer the same experience to our teachers, who in a way are also going through that same professional development. So the class advisors and advisory coordinators have all, have, have engaged the advisors in goal setting for advisory this year. And, um, they meet once a month, as Brad said, um, during Saber Spotlight. So they meet once a month to reflect on their goals as advisors, as a way to again reinforce that skill. Um, as something that we want for every member of the.
And then my final one is, uh, is there a curriculum, uh, formal curriculum for advisory? If, if, there's one that exists, because it is credit or an explosive should have on it, that's the thing that we probably should, if it does exist, it's gonna be out of date. Will you be presenting a curriculum, uh, that kind of puts, or puts this all in, in perspective? And, um, would be adopted and formalized, be seen by others?
So that, I think, would be the benchmarks, and definitely we can share those.
Yep. Thank you. Any other questions?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, thank you. I think the conversation style is very helpful and the presentations were, I think, answered a lot of questions that many of us had. So I really, really appreciate all of you coming tonight, sharing.
Um, all right, let's make, back to our agenda. Yeah, yes, please come on. Thank you. Um, the next two things on our agenda are, uh, field trip proposal. The first one is the BIOS one that they've done in the past, and the second one is the German cultural exchange. Are there any questions on those two?
The German cultural exchange is with the same group that comes over here from Germany, right?
Yeah, okay.
I got a question, and I think you've done this one personally, the German exchange program.
Yeah, have you done?
Yeah, uh, I've had, I haven't been, but students with us, yeah.
So do our kids get a discount out of this program? Because this is a for-profit company out of Massachusetts that does this. And we host these kids at no cost, no charge. Families end up having to pay the bill for food, um, entertainment, stuff like that. And our kids pay to go over, um, or those families do. So like, how does that work? Do we know if they get a discount?
No, I don't know.
That is the program.
I mean, there are a lot of. There was stuff we paid for when we did it, and we tried really hard, like we went down to head of the Charles one year, we take them to Boston, you know. But there is a lot of, there are a lot of programs within it when they're here that, the program is taking them on too. Uh, and it looked that way to me, like some of this was, you know, home with families, other parts were. You know, hotels and trips and, so I, I don't know if that really answered your question.
I, I don't, I'm always skeptical of for-profit companies just coming in and taking advantage of it. I know we did a lot of marketing.
This has been going on for a number of years. Yeah, yeah.
Like, are they giving some sort of, you know, benefit? Because I think Nashua does it, trying to remember.
Yeah, combines. Cannot answer your question exactly, but I guess if the families are signing up to do it, they understand.
As we did all their marketing free and saw the, you know, from the marketing person, it's like three moms that are down on a cave.
So just my, my, like, just looking, my, like, gut on this is, when you look at what the price includes. I don't think they're making a ton of money per child. Because there are some hotel stays involved, there's travel health insurance, there's easier to get into different things. Just given our international travel, you could get there. just given our international travel, you could get there very quickly. And we had, when we stayed in Egypt, we had free accommodations.
Question.
It's a question.
It is a question.
Thank you. Find out.
I want to add a burden to it. It's just something that resonated with me when I.
Yeah.
Go in, have the advertising. Well, it's the big, our profits.
Understand.
It was a nonprofit, you know, hey, they don't drive anything like this would be an issue.
Just, I'm just a concern.
Because there are other organizers, there are, there's tons. And then some um are nonprofit and connected to the German company and the tech government's folks. That's Gap, or they handle those gap in German. We'll just clear, there's something there.
Yeah.
But that's only same organization.
It's always, it's something can always be looked into and okay? Any other questions?
Oh, I'm in favor of field trips and seeing a lot of them. And I know that we typically will pay to families who have paying these, these I don't know where that support comes from, budget presentation. Maybe there is some dollars in there for, for this, but with more field trips that are multiple thousand dollars per maybe we need to think about funding a, maybe a separate fund or need-based, or I don't know how we qualify or clarify. How a family could qualify these to enable their, their students to at least have one kind of in four years to have a trip like this. Um, I don't even know, we've got it for the discussion, but I can see it. Make sure that we had enough support. This is not just hundred dollars on fee. This could be, you know, several thousand dollars to multiple trips or not. Could be quite a large amount.
Or maybe look at some others, others that could be added, at least it would be less. I have no idea if anyone's interested in, but like, uh, you know, a week at a K D, a camping to study.
That would be a great.
Naturally, you know, in a way that could be done, it's much, you know, so that people can get that experience and they can have it with that.
Right, I guess I've seen France, I've seen a lot of international come in, so.
Okay, so that's a good, that's a good question and we'll, we'll have to follow up on that.
Better out here.
It's a good idea to, yep. Great, thank you. Um, so I think you actually need approval on both of these. Can we do them at the same time or?
Yeah. I moved to, uh, we just separate them.
Yeah.
Thanks. To accept uh the field study proposal.
Have a second, I'll second that, seconds. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Sound like a great trip.
That's the extended field trip.
All right, any other discussion? Those in favor? Those opposed? That's all right. Stroke keep and so that's, he, there was one no, no abstentions, and the five that will still pass, but good question to follow up.
And then do we want to find out that information? Are you still interested in, in asking questions?
Well, clearly we have things like that and follow up, adding a burden, but maybe next year we can.
I wrote, I wrote it down as something I require.
Look at something that is a little bit more on the nonprofit side that is really geared towards experience for our kids and stuff like that.
Yep. Totally.
Actually, the impression is just that the company is
Next thing.
Exchange that.
Oh, no. I, I did a change program to Russia. But it was a nonprofit.
Yep, no, worth looking into, absolutely. Uh, next thing on our list is personnel, we'll scope that more in on public.
Yeah, I can say for now, while we have, you guys have seen in the the board notes. There's a F Y twenty-six retirement request for B and resignation letter effective December eighteenth from Amy Phong, two thousand twenty-four. Resignation letter from Frank Gallo, effective ten nine, two thousand twenty-four. Uh, and we will talk about this more depth.
Mm-hmm, and then we'll, we'll come out, we'll go on something out there. Okay. Um, science lab renovation. I, so that just happened in Mr. Pete, you want to give the update?
Yeah, no, I mean, we, Dan was very kind to take time out of his day to help.
We'll, we'll go into non-public to talk.
Oh, yeah. It was, uh, it was a really good experience. I think, um, I know I personally learned a lot from, from all three vendors that came in and shared their story, their, their vision of the project, and more importantly, how they could actually help us. And I think we came out with a pretty decent uh path forward with one of the vendors who I think was very visionary and I was able to really share a, a really good example of their work. And I think it's something that, that kind of impressed us. So we're gonna share that.
We'll share that.
Do we want to talk in public about who that is or do we want to?
Let's do it in public. Let's do that public first and then we'll do that, yes. Great, superintendent updates, Mike?
Yes, so uh couple uh things that you'll find in, in the board notes are updates that I sent out. Most of those are updates that I sent to Stephanie following our last meeting. I just wanted to kind of put them down there in, in writing again for you. A couple additional pieces, uh cheer concussions, I had a conversation uh with uh Kelly Brayley. I, I check in weekly with her around like athletics Tuesdays at noon. It's a whirlwind of ten minutes, twelve to twelve, ten. And she kind of updates me and uh, simple as this, you know, people receive your requirement about cheer concussions, we track them, we track all concussion concussions, why do they have a little bit more? Basically, there's a lot of throwing and dropping and, you know, limbs flying around. But it's just more there. And then we did receive a knee ask letter, Stephanie and I and Dana, about some of the work around science labs. And um, and they were, the summary of it is uh they're pleased that we are taking action to, to try to remedy the, the deficiency of the science lab, some of it.
Um, letter is in the facility shared folder that we all have access to.
Yeah, so that is where it is. I didn't indicate that. Um, and then as we're a month into school, uh I have been talking to different staffs, I've been meeting with uh staffs from around S A thirty-nine and talking about the opening, talking about the S E budget, framework, some of the data that goes with it, but a lot of them is, the point of the meeting is to let the building administrators and the staff of, of all our buildings, and, and in this case at Southiegen. We had a really, really good opening. Really, really good opening at all our schools and uh, and I'm serious, I said in a lighthearted manner in, in previous meetings, but I, I mean this with all seriousness, if we did not have facility issues in S A U thirty-nine and we did not have transportation issues, I could say, I feel this, this is strong of an opening that I've been part of uh since two thousand sixteen, both at White Mountains and, and Southiegen. It was a collective effort to get the buildings ready, to get new staff ready, to align everything to the framework, to welcome the students and the families in such a caring, um thoughtful manner, um to do the work that is required behind the scenes as well. Um, just, it, it's, it's, it's really a strong effort and, and I've talked to, you know, P P C here, they feel very similarly about the work that's happening here. Um, so I'm just really pleased with the progress and, and the pace that we're working at, at Southiegen High School. And uh, the product is, is really good for kids and, and really good for families, you know, with the exception of some of our facility issues and, and, and our struggles with transportation. Um, so that's it for now until again to non-public.
Any quick questions for Mike or, yep, right. Um, so public input, two of two. Is there, since there's no one in the room, is there anyone online that would like to speak at public input? Please raise your hand. We will recognize you and promote you to panelist. Don't see anyone raising their hand right now.
Can I just ask a question?
Yeah.
Just about the fees, I really appreciate you, I think that you'll get back to us with the, you know, fees that students are asked to pay and ask students. And um, I also appreciate the review of if you can call them user fees, distinguish. Guess there are two different kinds of fees, fees to attend, just to enroll, and then like, like the more like G V or something like that, then fees to participate in extra.
So we are going to do a little bit more work with that, uh, and we'll have that at our future date.
Yeah.
Um, so it, it is on our, our things to do list to, to take a look at it both, like you described it clearly.
Yeah.
To attend and matriculate through as an everyday student, and then if you want to do some extra cur- you know, curricular such as athletics. And so we'll, we'll get into that and get that too.
Yeah, right. And um, I'm wondering if the output could be just kind of a side-by-side or all in a spreadsheet, like distinguish one from the other, just so we can kind of examine it maybe before discussing it, since to be efficient with the questions and answers.
So it, it has budget implications, so um I was planning on having it as part.
Okay, right now.
Oh, because it's revenue. So if we're doing something with that, then we're gonna want.
So are we looking at doing those changes for next fiscal year?
I, I'm not there. For me, I was just gathering the information. For me, it was status quo, and then if there was going to be changes for F Y twenty-seven, I think that's a longer conversation.
Yeah, because I, I agree with John, like I'm very anti-fee, however. Um, the community has adopted that sort of perspective of, hey, if you want to participate, pay to play, that, that type of thing. So there's going to be a broader conversation with the community and say, hey, we're thinking about eliminating some of these costs to participate in some of the extra particular stuff. The community has to buy into that.
Right.
And if they're not going to, it's great. And I don't know if we have time between now and, and March to do that.
To adjust the budget appropriately for.
Yeah.
I'm not sure, but.
I think, and John, I, I'm all with you on, on the elimination of it, but I think that's a deeper conversation because that stuff comes and goes over time, right? Community is more giving, economy is doing well, people are a little bit more likely to say, yeah, we don't need to charge a fee for X. And then things get tough and then all those fees are actually added back on. And if we're going to be in a position where we're going to be on fire changing that, I think that's a conversation that we can filter through a process. What that looks like, I don't know, whether it's council or, you know, we start filtering it up that way and then bring that to fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six.
We have a robust.
Twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Yeah, heck, so we have a robust conversation. We know where we're going. You start filling out the budget off of whatever it is.
I, I'm not opposed to that approach for co-curricular fees, but I, I'm really particularly interested in I don't think it should cost families to send their school kids, well, I don't think those are extraordinary fees. I don't know precisely what they are. I mean, I, I made them myself, but I'd like to see them all laid out and I'd like to have this conversation. Maybe it is to burn some, or maybe we, we supplement that through a capital reserve fund and the voters can then fund it or not, that their choice. I don't know. Our first step is to understand it. When we take action on which piece of that is, we can decide at that time. I, I would refer to your decision um until we can see and have further discussion.
Well, yeah, I think there, there's two parts, the athletic fees are a full discussion, the other ones to walk into see.
Correct, club fees, I would put it that.
All right, I think it would be interesting that it still happened. I mean, you're going to talk to us about what they are, when we do the revenue, whether or not they get removed. Uh, just so we have some idea as we go forward to next year, what that means exactly.
Yeah.
And, and also just on fees, when you said uh like referees are more expensive, like all these things with athletics are more expensive. And we reviewed our own fees that we charge for and kept up with the current rates for the use of our fields and the facilities that um outside bodies use. Hey. And maybe we should, at my point, maybe we should align with current state affairs, make sure that our fees are in alignment and we're not giving away our fields. Um, we could put bills and revenue there. Yeah, so is there, do we have a rate sheet?
Well, yeah, that's what the right record.
No, was it last updated?
When it was last negotiated.
But we also have a, um, you know, taking on the facility fee. When you see, when someone wants theater, someone wants to use it, there is a fee. It's, it's actually a, a very interesting approach. You know, this, whether you're a local nonprofit, regional nonprofit, local for-profit, all those have different fees associated with it. It's a, it's a thorough document that Roger, Amy, we use it.
Yeah, it's on the website, the facilities use document.
Facilities use document. And by, by the way, I'm struggling to understand that. I'm not saying it is out of date.
No, no, it's a great question.
It is the whole thing we're doing currently. I just, maybe, since our costs are going up, maybe our revenue, our costs, the others should also.
We have looked at it.
Yeah.
In, in that realm about where we are. So that, that didn't seem crazy out of line, but we, so we have, you know, definitely looked at it. Didn't look like we're giving place away. We also worked to touch.
Okay.
Great, thank you. Um, so I don't think we have anybody to raise their hand, so we are going to, um, two things. So, um, again, I'll put on the website about looking for a community council number from Mount Vernon and two, our next meeting is October thirtieth. So everyone is very clear on that, it's a Wednesday. So it's off of Halloween. So we move that. All right, can I have a motion to go into non-public, number ninety-one A, three-two C?
I'm gonna make it, Johnson.
Yes.
And we'll call them.
Lover, yes.
The German, yes.
A, yes.
Huge, yes.
Brand, yeah. Very much, everyone.